A continuous period of time. In other words, if you need it to be out two days a week and then return to work for three, it's allowable under certain circumstances.
Thank you.
Okay, so item 5J will be changed to make the correction per Mrs. Kells' request and Mrs. Yarwood's. Do I need to reread the whole motion? Okay, anything there? All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes eight zero. Next thing up is the item six, the student liaison report. Mr. Carey.
So far, we have our lip sync battle, which is starting right now, and our auditions are next Monday, and the event is scheduled for March 11. The blood drive is on the 15th of March, and finally, our spring breakfast is on March 24.
Okay, thank you. The next is the president's report, but since he's not here, I'm going to do it. Two items, right-to-no requests this month. There were four items totaling $899 in attorney fees. The second item is a safety committee update. Do you want me to do that, or do you want me to do that yourself? You can work for later.
Okay, so at one of our last meetings, the board had asked for what we're doing in regards to safety, and we've had a committee that Mr. Loeffler has been in charge of because by code, we have to have this committee. It has to do with workers' compensation. He's going to talk about that. But because we have had issues, and we know it's important to be sure our students are mentally, physically, and emotionally safe, we have Dr. Bivard, who's chairing or acting as the coordinator of another committee. We were originally going to put the two together, but because their purposes are so different, we're keeping them separate. But Dr. Bivard will serve on Mr. Loeffler's, and Mr. Loeffler will serve on Dr. Bivard, so they can keep the lines of communication going. So both of them are going to give you an overview of what's been happening with these two committees.
I do chair the safety committee. Been approximately seven years that I've been chairing the committee. I work closely with PSBA and School Claims Services. Committee has 19 members on it. We consist of principals, teachers, custodial, maintenance, administration. We meet the second Tuesday of every month here in the LGI room at 1:30. With that, our main goal is to reduce workman's comp. So we inspect one school a month, and we come back with a report. Some of those items will go to the principal and ask for them to make changes. Some of the items, mostly items, come back from me as a work request, and then we do the report to the safety committee of our findings, and then I send that off to the principal also, and a safety committee memo. We'll follow up maybe about six months later with that school and make sure those items have been changed. We have a checklist that we go through, so every school's the same. We don't go in one day randomly and look at one thing, and the other day something else. So we have a full two-page checklist that we go through of items we look at. We must be certified, so every year, we have a certification down here in the LGI room by the School Claims Services. I am required to have an agenda at every meeting and meeting minutes. The agenda is posted, I'm sorry, the meeting minutes are posted on the Penridge webpage. Any questions on my committee?
Thank you, Jeff. At your tables, I put a packet of information, which includes, very first page was the one that Mr. Loeffler spoke about the work safety committee. The bigger committees that we have that have been going on in the school district involve bigger safety and security issues, so I'm not going to read it word for word, but this is coordinating what the state requires as far as the monthly drills for evacuation. We don't do just fire drills. We do lockdowns, we do intruder drills. As we get more advice from the police forces and from the Bucks County Emergency Management System, they actually give us updates on what kind of drills we should be practicing. Those drills are required to be reported to the state every year. There's a report at the end of the year for the weapons and violence reports. They can turn it in. We also have, and this was done a few years ago when this was under my purview in my previous position, every school has an all-hazard safety plan manual, which they update on a regular basis, a minimum year yearly. So it covers things like threat assessments, bomb threats, child abandonment, passes around death of a student, things that even happen outside of school, earthquakes. You remember that several years ago, there was flooding based on the hurricane that came down? That person in a position, I was one of the ones along with Mrs. Cleese that was responsible to listen to and respond to any kind of evacuation where they would use our buildings for overnight housing, such as they used Palisades High School, if you remember that, that school was used. We have sites within Penridge that are required to be used as well. The pandemic flu events, which was done several years ago, we had to practice for those. We used Central Middle School and the high school, and they tested to see if enough people can get in. We do lock drills that way. So it covers a lot of things, covers field trip emergencies, explosions that could happen in school. We also deal with bullying programs, safety programs, deal with the hazardous materials, spells, all those sort of things, lockdowns, contamination of food. So it covers a lot of things that we actually work with. So I coordinate that, but as we get updates from different state and federal management institutions, then we work on updating ours. This year, the high school had to work on updating a piece of their crisis management for what happened when a student who is no longer in school passes away. How do we deal with that? That's something that came up new, so we're trying to make sure we update the manual. So when they're finished with that, and we're working, they worked on it in our last service on meeting with them again on Wednesday, to make sure they have it up, then we'll share it out with the other buildings so that they can use that same material for theirs or for their own manuals. On the last page, we have some of the things that we do on a regular basis, training for staff on harassment, acceptable use, mandated reporter training, things that happened just this past year at the schools. You can go and review that, reviewing precautions. We're dealing with social media, obviously. We have programs that are coming in that we coordinate with the community and the NOVA program, who presents things. We're having, I think it's either April 14th or 18th, I'm waiting here back from the police department, so they wanted to make sure that the date was available for them. Our high school is coordinating an effort with Quakertown on bringing in a person to deal with the topic of mental health. I think it's going to be held at Quakertown Community High School, but we go together on bigger topics that are of interest to various age groups of students. So I'm going to pass the one that's from our district office, the all-hazard safety plans. You can at least thumb through and see what topics are in there. So we do cover a lot of things. All information is shared out with the principals. Policies that you adopt, you know, are related to a lot of the safety concerns that we have, they're brought to the board. So this is an update, and won't be given. If there are questions that may have been, at least you want to go through the information first, but you can ask at another board meeting. I'd be glad to, or just shoot an email. I'll try to respond to everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bivard and Mr. Loeffler. Next, we'll go right into your report, Dr. Addigan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Casper. First, I'd like to thank South Middle School for the district office meeting room display. We have a donation of a set of class books of Charlotte's Web to Bedminster Elementary School from Crystal Bodrin, so we thank her. Our takes pride theme for the month of March is going to be respect. Students will be reminded that respect means an attitude of regard or esteem for another. Respect is courteous regard for the feelings and opinions of others. People who demonstrate respect treat everyone the same, no matter their gender, race, religion, size, or age. And earlier, I talked about some of our points of pride, and I have some others to share with you. Congratulations to Joe Zook, Emily Hughes, Kristen Dowling, Andrew Kleima, Jeremy Noel, and Sarah Witherow for earning positions in the 2016 PMEA choir. They were among 160 students from Bucks and Montgomery Counties who spent two days rehearsing before performing at Lower Murray and High School on February 6. The high school debate team finished the regular season in second place and will move into the semifinal round starting in March. Good luck to coach Lisa Maderick and her students. We already heard that this year's spring breakfast is going to be at the high school on the 24th, and it'll be from 6:00 to 7:15. All community members are welcome. I'm sure many of you have heard the heartwarming story of Nick Senchenko and his annual humanitarian trip to a children's hospital in Ukraine. We received several inquiries about how people can help Nick defray the expenses of his travel. I'm happy to let you know that the Football Booster Club has established a GoFundMe account in Nick's name. Please see Mrs. Schmidt for details. I'm also happy to announce that recreational swim time for the public is available in our auditorium at the high school on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 7:30 to 9:30 p.m. and on Saturdays from 12:30 to 3:00. You can obtain more information on our website. This is the time of year when our students have the opportunity to demonstrate what they've learned in the classroom by competing against other schools. That was the case recently when our TSA, Technology Student Association, club members competed at the annual regional competition in Quakertown against 20 other high schools. Congratulations to the 10 competitors who qualified to move on to the state competition in April. We'll be recognizing them individually next month. By the way, the tech school is holding an open house starting at 6:00 p.m. on March 3rd to officially mark completion of its $23 million expansion and renovation project. I encourage you to stop over and see for yourself the amazing transformation that has taken place. Our cheerleaders capped an amazing season by attending the UCA National Cheerleading Championship in Orlando, Florida. The JV team took fourth place in the large JV division against 15 teams. The varsity team took ninth place in the medium varsity division against 60 teams. This is the second time Penridge has attended the national championship and competed against squads from across the country. Earlier this season, the squad earned the suburban one league and district one titles and placed in the top five at the PIAA state championship. Penn South's annual hockey for heart event on December 3rd raised more than $800 for the American Heart Association. Approximately 100 students on 20 teams participated in the round robin floor hockey tournament. The top fundraiser for the event was sixth grader JR Roberts, who raised $100 himself. Way to go, JR, and way to go, South Middle School. Penridge High School Student Council recently presented a check for $5,800 to Grand View Health from its Pink Out 2015 event. Majority of money was raised through t-shirt sales. Congratulations to Charles Laneheart and Tatted Samantha Brannan for being named this year's Friend of Education Award winners by the Penridge Community Education Foundation. Mr. Laneheart is an English teacher at the high school, while the Brannans are the driving force behind those spectacular theater productions involving our drama students. These well-deserved honors will be presented at a lovely evening on April 19 at the Sellersville Theater. Ticket information will be available on the PCEF website later this week. Speaking of PCEF, the Scripps Regional Spelling Bee for students from Bucks and Montgomery Counties will be held at Central this year on March 12. They are expecting more than 60 youngsters to compete to the right to go to the National Spelling Bee in Washington, D.C. And one more item from PCEF, they have partnered with the Perk Restaurant this year for the annual Future Leader Scholarship. On Monday, April 4th, the Perk will donate 10% of all eat-in sales between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. to PCEF to help fund the scholarship. Please mark your calendar to help support this worthy cause at a great local restaurant. So that's my report, Mr. Casper.
Thank you, Dr. Addigan. We're on to the committee reports, starting with Activities Committee. Mrs. Yarwood.
So the Activities Committee hasn't met since our last meeting, and the next meeting is scheduled for March 9, 2016. Here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Curriculum Committee. That's Dr. Yarnell's committee. They met on February 8th. There are no motions under that committee, and the next Curriculum Committee meeting is scheduled for March 14th. Next up, Facilities Committee. Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Facilities Committee met on February 2nd. There are three motions this evening. The first motion is to obsolete the items listed below letters A, B, and C.
Okay, we have a motion to obsolete items, motion one, A through C. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Any questions, comments from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
The second motion is to approve school bus cameras in the amount of $67,386.74 per the co-source contract 012-145.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve the school bus cameras. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mrs. Cull. Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
And the third motion is to allow for the design and bidding of a ground-level ventilation system and an ultraviolet light system for the pool. In addition, an alternate bid will be included for the draining, acid washing, pool wall maintenance, and refilling of the pool.
Okay, motion on the floor to allow the design bid of a ventilation, ground-level ventilation system. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mrs. Yarwood. Questions or comments from board members? Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for February 29th.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Next up is Finance Committee. Mr. Regomo.
Thank you. Finance Committee met on February 2nd, 2016. There are, my apologies, six motions. There are two, A and B. The first is Pennsylvania School for the Deaf, personal care assistance for a student identified as 2016-27, 2015-2016, 197.75 per day.
Okay, we have a motion, one, A and B.
Do you want me to read?
Did you read me?
No, you want me to read me?
Read it.
Okay. And then Lehigh University, Penridge Junior Prom for 2017, April 22nd, 2017, class of 18, $2,000 deposit, and $15 facility fee. Vote, we're reviewed by the [inaudible].
Thank you. Motion to approve contracts for the Pennsylvania School of Deaf and Lehigh University. Do we have a second?
Second.
The second, Mrs. Schmidt. Thank you. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Regomo.
The second motion is to approve Bucks County Army Unit's 2016-17 program and services and instructional materials and research service budget.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the programs and services, materials and research services. We have a second.
Second.
Seconded, Mrs. Cull. Questions or comments from board members? If not, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Third motion is to approve the Malle invoice for $2,500.
Motion on the floor to approve Malle's invoice. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Schmidt. Any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Regomo.
Fourth motion is to approve settlement agreements identified as 2016-28 and 2016-29.
Motion to approve the agreements as stated. Is there a second?
A second.
Is that Miss Clemmons? Second, Miss Clemmons. Any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Fifth motion is to deny exoneration requests, 0294 and 004 from home members for real estate [inaudible].
Okay, thank you to the motion to deny the request for tax exoneration. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Questions or comments from board members?
I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Based on the situation and the information that we have with the extenuating circumstances, I would be supportive of waiving these penalties for the two people who asked to have these penalties waived. I think they were pretty severe extenuating circumstances, so in my opinion, I think that it would be a good idea to waive them.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Cull.
I just wanted to ask, at the meeting, I had asked if, you know, what we generally do in these situations, and I was told that generally, exemptions aren't approved, or but I just wanted to know, Mr. Cox, if there was, if you could give some background on why that might be.
I can, and I can at least give you my view of these requests and the underlying law. These kinds of requests come before the district and the board from time to time. There is certainly a mechanism in the law for a taxpayer to appeal the imposition of a tax that was incorrect or in the wrong amount, or if there was a mistake where the taxpayer paid too much tax and is entitled to a refund. There is not a provision in the law for a taxing authority to make an exoneration for a taxpayer who, for legitimate reasons perhaps, as are set forth here, or at least reasons we can all sympathize with, as set forth here, just doesn't pay the tax or forgets to pay the tax, or for whatever reason, doesn't pay tax that they owe. There's not really a provision in the law to make the exception for that. And there are provisions in the law that actually say the taxing authority at the local level doesn't really have the power to exonerate that kind of thing, because the power to tax comes from the state government and the Constitution. It's delegated to the school district, and that delegation of authority requires that the school district impose the tax uniformly among the entire tax base. And what can happen is if a local taxing authority begins to make exceptions here or there, even for folks who set forth sympathetic cases, as these folks have set forth, that the district's tax levy at that point is no longer uniform and is in violation of applicable law. So to the extent I'm ever asked for my opinion as to what a school district or some other local taxing authority should do in these kinds of situations, my advice is to deny them for the reasons that I just mentioned.
Can I just follow up and add, why do they even have a form for them to fill out and send in to make this request if we legally can't, you know, allow, you know, accept that request anyway?
Well, for one reason would be the one that I mentioned, which is that if you, if a taxpayer can demonstrate that the tax which the district has imposed was improper, or that the tax that the taxpayer paid was in the wrong amount, in other words, there was a mistake made by the taxing authority that warrants an exoneration or a refund, I think that's the reason for the exoneration form or the refund form. But in a case where the taxpayer says, yes, I owed the tax, but I didn't pay it for some reason, and yes, I stipulate that although I didn't pay the tax, the amount that I was taxed was correct, that's a different kind of scenario, in my view, legally.
Okay, so that motion, I believe, is still out there on the floor. I don't know if we had a second or not. I think we did. So, all right, so all those in favor of this denial? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Regomo.
Thank you. The sixth motion is to authorize the administration to advertise the 2016-17 bids for RFPs listed below, A and B, facilities, supplies and services, and facilities services, RFP.
Do we have a second? To authorize the administration to advertise for supplies, services, and for facilities services, RFP. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mrs. Schmidt. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for February 29, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Regomo. Mrs. Miller, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. We met on February 16th at the intermediate unit's location in Doylestown. As part of the special education minute report, we learned the IU provides itinerary, instruction, and supports in families' homes or group homes to 35 multiply disabled students ranging in age from 16 to 21 years of age. These students are very medically fragile and unable to participate in a school setting. Teachers and therapists, including art and music teachers, travel to their homes to deliver instruction based on the needs identified in each student's IEP. Services are designed to promote the student's active participation and accessibility to grade-level curriculum using modified functional and grade-level curriculum to work toward the PA course standards. Currently, students in Centennial, Central Bucks, Palisades, Pansbury, and Quakertown Districts receive these services. Students also participate in a functional vocational leisure activities designed to build lifelong skills such as responding, interacting, and making choices. IU staff work closely with parents and their group home staff to determine when a student is medically able to return to the school environment. Programs and services minute report informed the board that since 1973, the IU has administered a number of federal, state, and community-funded programs that benefit nearly 13,000 PA students who attend one of the 148 nonprofit non-public schools in Bucks County. The IU provides both Act 89 and Title II A services to these schools. Additionally, 10 districts in Bucks County, three from Montgomery County, contract Title I services to non-public schools through the IU. The IU also administers federal Title I neglected and delinquent funds at five county agencies, including Bucks County Youth Detention Center, Community Service Foundation in Easterville and Sowersville, Edison Manor, Mayhem, Mam, excuse my pronunciation of that, House in Doylestown, and Warwick House in Langhorne. Combined funds in all of these programs in just 2015-16 totaled over $5 million, and for the seventh consecutive year, the IU received a $6,000 grant from PVE to provide a series of three regional workshops to new school district coordinators of federal programs to inform and update them on compliance measures. Federally funded Title I neglected and delinquent programs coordinated by Ron Roldan provides intensive supplementary reading and mathematics instruction, GED preparation, and counseling services. Over 800 Bucks County girls, an increase from 70, are affected to turn out May 26th for the Fourth Annual Girls' Stent Conference held at Delaware Valley University in Doylestown Township. With the increase of girl participants comes the increase demand for female volunteers, female volunteer presenters working in fields such as agriculture, banking, physics, nursing, marine biology, real estate engineering, and app design. So anyone interested, please contact me for details, or if you know of anyone that would be interested in presenting. Each bring the IU hosted student art show and reception. This year will be held on March 15th, 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the IU's facilities on Shady Retreat Road in Doylestown. The show honors 18 student artists from Bucks County. Their outstanding artwork was selected Their outstanding artwork was selected for display for the IU's rotating student art gallery during the 2015-16 school year. The IU invites you all to attend, and please contact me. They are requesting an RSVP, no later than March 10. Another date to keep in mind is Saturday, May 14, for the Third Annual Run, Walk, and Roll 5K fundraiser. The roll is wheelchairs, strollers, et cetera. This is a worthy cause and a great way to spend your morning in beautiful Doylestown. I've attended the last two and I can vouch for that. Money raised by the IU stays with the IU. And if you recall, a few months ago, I reported the IU helped an elementary school in Quakertown purchase and install a swing that used with wheelchairs. And the student was like thrilled, it was the first time she'd ever been on a swing. So these funds are very, very valuable. So please join me and my family, we'll see you then. Our next scheduled meeting is March 15 at 7:00 p.m. and will be held at the Shady Retreat location in Doylestown. Thank you, Mr. Casper.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Next up is Personnel and Mr. Goh.
Thank you. The, there's one correction, Mr. Casper. The next Personnel meeting is actually scheduled for March 16. It's written as the 9th, but it should have been corrected as the 16th.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Miller, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Thank you. Policy Review Committee met on February 2. Before I read this motion, Mr. Cox, would you like to offer your opinion?
Yes, I'm happy to, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. So the changes that were made to the policy are lawful, in my view. And I listened to the comment from the member of the Republican spoke, and her point is well taken. But the change doesn't do what I believe she fears it does. The change just says that whatever other obligation an employee has under the Child Protective Services law, as a mandated reporter, that in addition to whatever those lawful obligations are to report, an employee also has to immediately report reasonable suspicion of child abuse to the superintendent. And that enables the superintendent to see that the school district as an institution is taking appropriate measures, and that the head of the organization, as is required by the Educator Misconduct Act, is the one who makes a report to PDE if and when there's a report that she or he believes is appropriate to report. So the change doesn't strip or remove the obligation of an employee to make a report that they're obligated to make to Childline under the statute. It just also, the change just says that in addition to whatever other obligation the employee has, she or he must also make a report immediately to the superintendent. And that's what that change does. And it, in my view, was appropriate and lawful.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, I appreciate that. So I'd like to make the motion to recommend second reading approval of the following policy, number 824, Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. There's a motion to recommend policy E24. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion seconded by Mrs. Colby. Any other questions or comments from board members?
I'd like to make a comment. Later, right after that in the policy, it mentions that the administrator, that the teacher would then report it to, should also still follow up and report it to Childline. So if we're following up in there and mentioning, you know, kind of reinforcing that, it may be a good idea to reinforce it on both, or take it out, you know what I mean? But I also just wanted to make a comment that this isn't finalized when we vote on this. This goes back to policy to be read again, doesn't it? Second reading? I'm sorry.
This isn't the second reading, but as, you know, we can always revisit any policy, and we can always amend it after more discussion. And I really appreciated Ms. Ferrara getting up and making that point. Hopefully, that was a good explanation, good enough explanation here. But yeah, so tonight's the second reading, but in the future, we can always change.
Okay.
So here's the provision that I'm referring to. It says, "All district employees, independent contractors, and volunteers who have reasonable cause to suspect that a child is a victim of child abuse shall immediately report the suspected abuse in accordance with applicable law, regulations, and court policy." And that section of the policy is specifically referring to the Childline mandated report and also the report to the, under the Educator Misconduct Act. The provision that follows that just simply says that a person who has suspicion of sexual abuse or exploitation or other misconduct must also report that to their immediate supervisor and the superintendent. So it's a belt and suspenders approach, I think it's appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, so I believe we have a second. So I see no more comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, eight zero.
I'm sorry. Lost track. The next Policy Review Committee is scheduled for March 9, 2016.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller, and we're right on to the tech school.
Okay. This actually belongs to Mrs. Schmidt, so Mrs. Crumb. You know, somebody really needs to inform me, because last month I was told that it was going to be you, Mrs. Schmidt, that you were going to be doing it.
They was on it both months. I did it last month because you apparently weren't told that. And apparently, I wasn't told this week, thought it was on the agenda again. Okay, so I thought you were assuming that responsibility, no?
So do you want to do it?
I don't have, I don't have my notes with me, so.
Mrs. Schmidt, are you able to?
We need a policy on communication amongst board members.
All right, we'll sort it out right now in a minute or two.
As always, they're, they post their minutes on the Upper Bucks County Tech School website. Tech School Board did meet on February 18, just last week. And prior to the meeting, the Tech School culinary students, culinary and the pastry arts students provided an outstanding meal for board members, administrators, and other guests that were invited to the school. So we are letting our little secret out now about that restaurant up there. It's, the school's restaurant is open Wednesdays and Thursdays every week from 12 to 1:30. And I encourage you to go up there and try the outstanding food that these students are creating there and growing also, a lot of what they're making to serve there. But they're doing an outstanding job, and we were all really privileged to be able to indulge in that last Thursday. Construction is basically finished at this point, they're onto punch lists. As Dr. Radigan said, the open house will be March 3. I encourage people to go up there and to see the new school. It really is very impressive. Just real quick, to touch on a couple other things. There are more students that are going to be going on to the Skills USA competitions. Penbridge is very well represented there. And the next meeting will take place on March 17 at 7:30 at the Upper Bucks County Tech School. And we'll figure out for the next meeting who's in charge.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Schmidt.
Can I just add something to the, since we're promoting the tech school, there's a couple of other, the Cosmetology Department is open for business on Thursdays and Fridays between 8:30 and 10:00, and 12 to 1:30 by appointment only. So you can call the tech school for that. And they also, when we took the tour, you should see the salon in the Cosmetology Department. It looks like, you know, your real salon that you would go to out in public. And then we went around to a new department that's called Small Engines, and they actually welcome the public to bring in anything that you might have to repair, like your lawn mowers and ATVs and other things like that. So there's a lot of opportunities up at the tech school for the community and the children to sort of work together, give them experience, and give you quality work, you know, at a good price. So check them out.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Mr. Kraus in the Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Although the Technology Committee has not met since our last meeting, I would like to report that Dr. Scheid, Mrs. Miller, and several other of our staff members are out at the Pennsylvania Educational Technology Expo and Conference at the Hershey Conference Center, the 21st through the 24th. And they're attending workshops and seminars on everything from computer forensics, STEM, and social media. So it's a good opportunity for them to learn the latest and greatest, what's going on out there in technology. Our next committee meeting is scheduled for March 14, 2016.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to chime in for a second and say, we've got Mrs. Miller replaced, our new Director of Technology, Mr. Torotto's replacement. We have some hopefully good news coming back from, or some good ideas coming back from Hershey. And then finally, the three of us could have our first meeting together and get, roll this thing out again. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Mr. Casper.
Next up is Mrs. Baynes Clemmons, Act 48 meeting.
The Act 48 committee hasn't met since our last meeting, but one thing I didn't add then is Dr. Brace is working on a professional development survey that he's getting sent out. He's sent it out to get feedback on the questions, adding, removing, modifying any from any of the teachers. And then that survey's going to go out to get feedback from the teachers on, you know, what they feel their needs are for the professional development. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 10, 2016.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Clemmons. Next up is the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Ad-Hoc Fundraising Committee didn't meet this month, they will meet as scheduled. They'll schedule the meeting as needed.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. We're moving on to old business. Do any board members have any old business items they would like to bring up? Okay, don't see anything there. So we're on to announcements. The next regular school board meeting is scheduled for March 21, here at 7:00 p.m. The executive session was held on February 8 for the purpose of personnel matters. And we'll have an executive session following tonight's meeting for the purpose of personnel matters and litigation. With that, we move on to public comment. Please go to the podium, name, you just call it, please.
Robert Lyndon, West Rockville Township. I'm just confused a little bit about the motion number three under Facilities, where it says alternative bid. Is that, I don't understand that word. Does that mean in place of the other bid, or in addition to the bid?
Thank you for your comment about that, Mr. Lyndon. I like, I think it's a good question. We'll get with Mr. Loffler. Rather than tell you what I think it might be, we'll find out for sure.
Thank you.
But from the looks of it, it looks like it's two bids. Thank you. Mrs. Herring.
Good evening, Diane Herring, Hilton Township. Regarding your vote this evening on the policy, I understand from counsel that his statement is that the policy says it must also report it to the superintendent. However, on the copy on the website, those specific words are not there listed as must also. It simply strikes the mandatory reporting requirement. You have a policy listed to the left, 301A, and your policy, 826. Both of them have the mandatory reporting requirement as copied exactly by state law in the verbiage. However, this evening, you've now added a new policy that removes that verbiage. In my opinion, you have created a giant quagmire because you have created multiple policies with varying verbiage around the same law. You also cite in left column, A Code 207.9. When you read 207.9 verbatim, the verbiage you struck is in the state law. I have addressed this board on numerous occasions about safety concerns, the well-being of children. To see you strike down something that is designed to protect a child that is verbatim in the state law is deeply troubling. I meant what I said last month. It is getting more and more concerning. I addressed this board now for six months about getting ID tags for visitors. Not a peep. Nothing done. At night, you walk in this building, you can walk in this building at 8, 9, 10 o'clock. There are kids in this building doing various activities. There isn't a door secure. There isn't an egress for them that they're specifically told to enter and exit this building on. And we've had how many issues with how many employees? And we want to strike verbiage that tells people that you should do everything possible to communicate this? Beyond my comprehension.
The vermin that the language requiring a mandated report has been stricken from this policy is simply untrue. That is just not true. The policy continues to require that, as do other board policies. And to say, in my view, and maybe I'm adding commentary here, that the passage of this policy, and my understanding is that the school district is one of the first school districts in the Commonwealth to pass this kind of policy, which imposes strict requirements for the interaction among staff and volunteers and students, is somehow making students at this school district less safe is, is not true, in my view, from a legal perspective. In any event, I can certainly say that the language that has been removed following first reading is not removing the requirement for mandated reporting. As a matter of all, it just simply is not doing that. That's all I have, Mr. Casper.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the press? Would you mind going up to the podium so everybody can hear you? Thank you very much.
About you, I'm from the zero. The school bus cameras, how many cameras is it? And this will put on all the buses. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know, is this, we're trying to avoid, I can't give you that exact number right here, but I would love to give it to you afterwards when I can check on, to make sure I know what that number is. Be happy, more than happy to do that.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay. All right, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.